I think that's everybody, George.
Okay, great. Well, good evening to everyone and welcome to the Northampton Public Hearing held by the Planning Board twice a month. This is October 14th. We're meeting by Zoom. And everybody realizes this session is being recorded, okay? We're gonna start before we get into our agenda items, the applications for public hearing. We're just gonna start with a public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to the planning board about any items that don't relate to the agenda items, the public hearings coming up, please feel free to come to the podium, such as waving your hand or raising your hand via the toolbar. Okay, as is usual, nobody has too many things for the planning board, so we'll move right into our first item, which is a seven o'clock public hearing for site plan and a special permit for shared driveway and flag lot by Jeff Mackler at 415 North Farms Road, Florence MAP ID 714. So the board will actually vote on two applications here, a site plan for the flag lot, I believe, and a special permit for the shared driveway. So does the applicant have a presentation for the planning board?
Yeah, I have a brief presentation. I don't know if I'm allowed to share the screen or not.
Yes, you should be able to share the screen.
Okay. Everybody see that, okay?
Yes.
So we're here this evening for proposed shared driveway and flag lot at 415 North Farms Road in Florence. The applicants are Jeff Mackler and Melanie Mendoza. The owner is Frederick and Susan Mackler. Before you guys, for review, as a permit application, we have a site plan and special permit, as was said, some supporting documents, drainage letter, and some plans. So the project is, it's an existing lot. It's 29, a little over 29 acres located on the, in the north part of town, near the border with Williamsburg in Hatfield. The existing parcel is, if you can follow my hand here, it's this, this large parcel here. It's got frontage in two spots, one to the south and one to the north. Currently, there's a driveway on the north side with an existing home. And then there's basically, you know, vacant land to the south and west. This is sort of a hayfield pasture area. This home is on public water in private septic, and there is utilities onsite down to the existing residents. Grades here, so North Farms Road is to our west, and the parcels located the east. Grades basically come from either direction down to sort of a low point in the center where there is an existing stream in wetland. So due to the city's wetland bylaw, we were encouraged to come up with an alternative to coming across and creating a lot on the southern frontage. So we submitted a zoning permit and it came back with us needing a permit for a driveway and a flag lot. So the proposal here to create the parcel is to create a flag lot on the existing, for the existing residents, and then a conventional lot with frontage to the south for the new home. The existing driveway is then proposed to become shared with a little spur off to get to the house at this location. What's the goal here? Well, the goal is to build a single-family residence. This kind of a custom-designed contemporary feel. It's got solar, you know, it's maximized for solar gain. And it was designed specifically for the site to fit into the the grades on site and to provide sort of a walkout structure to avoid, you know, moving lots of earth. So in order to accomplish this, if we are able to secure the permit from, from you folks, we'll have to come back with an A&R plan to create the lot. This is a draft of the A&R plan. Like I said, if we're successful in getting the permit, we would come back to you for signature on this. As you can see here, we're sort of, I'm just showing the eastern, see the western part of the lot. And here is the existing residence. So again, we're going to create a flag lot here. This is the 25-acre portion. It would have the existing residents on it, and then we would create this lot here, which is a conventional lot. In order to be able to put the home here, we're proposing to use and make the existing driveway shared and common to allow access. As far as the site here, we're proposing to meet all zoning. You know, we have in excess of the frontage here. Our lack, our flag stem is, is correct. We have our one and a half time frontage diameter here with the house in it. We have our 175 feet of frontage in our lot with back to our residence here. So we're not, not proposing any, any variances for that. Again, the lot here, just to go back, it's, it's actually in two districts. But all of our work and all of the proposed work is in the WSP district here. Basically, the remaining land is in that SC district. This is sort of a bird's eye view. This is looking west. In the background here is North Farms Road. In the front here is the existing residence that exists. That's the residence that's going to become the flag lot. And then we're going to use the portion of the driveway and sneak our way in here to this area approximately where the home would be located. This is sort of the hill, a little bit of kind of scrub vegetation there. There isn't a lot of clearing proposed here, very minimal. This is just kind of an overall plot plan of where the work is. All our work is proposed outside the buffer, and it's basically limited to the northwest portion of the lot in this area. Next plan here, we're going to zoom in a little bit here. So this is the existing driveway that we're going to reuse, and then we're going to build off of that driveway, a short section here to the residence which would be located here. So this is the portion that would be shared, and this is the portion that would just be for the new home. Also, here, we can see that we're proposing a well. We're proposing to reuse a shed that used to be part of the previous lot, of the existing lot. And you can see the septic system down here, and that we're outside of the buffer and riverfront areas on the west side of the lot. We have some proposed drainage features, swales with level spreaders, turnouts in a drop inlet to control the stormwater. We also have a long swale here, because this is, this is a sort of a sloping hill here. So we're grabbing any water from to the west of us and sending it around the septic system into the field. This is a photo of the existing driveway. It's like a chip, chip seal sort of oil and stone. It's got existing swales. We're proposing to, to basically do the same thing and with our extension here and add a few features here to improve. Down by this pole here is where the driveway would, would, would pop off. That's as an example here, or this is the location here. This is looking south. As you can see, it's a field for most of it. The driveway would come in here down to where we locate the house in the back here. As far as the, the new portion of the driveway, it's under 8%. So it's not very steep. One of the reasons we were able to do that is that sort of custom home we talked about with the garage up top here in the walkout that allowed us to to keep the disturbance under an acre and also keep the cuts and fills down, which are all good things. As far as the site plan and special permit criteria, we believe that what's before you is, is worthy of a permit because the common drive, the shared drive scenario here that we have actually minimizes curb cuts. The shared driveway reduces the amount of clearing in the driveway length that would be otherwise required. Because we're reusing an existing driveway, we're reducing impervious surfaces as compared to a conventional unshared access point. We're located behind and down gradient of residences, and we're able to remain, to maintain the existing buffers to the east. The home proposed features southern exposure and overhangs to maximize solar gain in the winter and provide shade to the structure in the summer. We're able to get a lot here with a home without any new subdivisions road or having a development that is disturbing more than acre of, of land disturbance. And lastly, we're not seeking any zoning variances. This is basically just a special permit to allow the existing residents to be put on a flag lot and to allow the shared driveway as we've shown. That's really all I have unless you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Could you go back a little bit to the shared driveway and show us where the turnout is for two cars passing, how you're going to?
Sure. So. So if you can see here, there's a, we have a widened section area here where two cars can pass. We also have, because this driveway here is in a T-shaped, this provides an emergency vehicle turnaround, which we ran a template for. We also have a turnaround down the end here. So in this area here, we can pass vehicles. We also, in this area here, because we have the T-type intersection, you can see any cars coming down the road or coming from the bottom here to allow them to pass.
Mr. Moreno, can you magnify that sheet for us a little bit, expand that?
Yeah, I'm trying here, but it's not cooperating. Oh, there we go. Let me get the next sheet here, hold on.
So your top left corner, there's the passing area.
Yep. So here's our passing area here, which is 20 feet. We're widening to 15 feet where needed. We have our emergency turnaround. And again, you know, the driveway comes down here to the existing residence down to the right. So you got good visibility in both directions here for passing vehicles.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
I have a question. I don't have any problem with it. I'm just curious as to, I forget, which is the lot one and which is lot two, but the lot with the new house retains frontage on the north and the south. I'm just curious like why you, it just creates a very odd shaped lot, which I guess is fine.
Yes, well, up here, there's not enough frontage up here to have both the flag lot and the conventional. So we, they created a flag lot here, and then the frontage for this is actually down here. And that provides a lot with back to the, to the residents here.
What, what's the benefit of the frontage on the north side for that lot, though? Like, why didn't you just give it all to the existing house?
Well, that's, this is what they worked out.
Okay, that's fine.
This is sort of what the, what the thinking was.
Again, it's their prerogative. I was just wondering what the law says.
Yeah, it, it creates a little bit of a funny shape, but there was a method to the madness there in the discussions between them. Remember here that it is kind of funny, but remember how big this parcel is. If I zoom, I need to zoom in here. So the existing residents here, this is a huge parcel here in this field. So although it's kind of a funny shape, the house is kind of up in this corner.
My other question might be, I know as you go down to the bottom of the existing driveway, as it drops down to the house, I, I'm thinking that's probably at least 10, 10-degree drop, perhaps more. But I guess our shared driveway ends where the new driveway peels off to the new house. Is that correct?
Yeah, the top part is flatter. It does get steeper down the bottom, but that's the portion that is unshared. So yes, you're correct.
And I noticed that as you're leaving the driveway to go back onto north, the North Farms Road, visibility isn't great, especially to the left. There's one of those mirrors up on a pole across the street.
Yeah, that, that's true. It isn't great, but to my knowledge, it's been working. Not aware of, of issues there. The existing owners, they might be on the call. We could, we could ask them what this, what the situation is further, but I'm not really adding a lot of trips here. So I, I believe it, is it a good use of, of the existing curb cut?
All right. If there are no other questions from the board, we could open it up to the public and then come back to the presentation. So is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor or has any comments about the application for this flag lot and shared driveway? Please raise your hand via Zoom or just wave it. Okay, Mr. Moreno, do you know if the applicant has spoken with any of the butters regarding this project or how those discussions went?
I asked that. I, I believe they've had some discussions, not a lot. From my knowledge, there wasn't a lot of, of back and forth. They might be on the call here. Not sure if they're willing to to discuss that.
We are on the call, and we had initial conversations with all the neighbors when we wanted to come in from the other end, which was not possible, where people were concerned about a long driveway across the field. So there hasn't been any conversation since we clearly not coming across the field. And so no neighbor has expressed anything, and they're all aware of it.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, would you just give us your name and your address just for our record?
Yes, Susan Mackler, 415 North Farms Road.
Great, thanks, Susan. All right, no other comments from the public. We'll throw the ball back to the planning board. Is there any, any more questions or any motion to close the public hearing at this point?
I would move to close the public hearing.
A second.
Okay, so Carolyn, just to be clear on our kind of protocols, even though these are two permits, a special permit and a site plan, we, they both come under one public hearing. We're disclosing one public hearing, not two, correct? But we'll probably be taking two votes?
Um, you don't necessarily, so it is officially, you're voting on two aspects, so two permits. One is a site plan for the shared driveway, the other is a special permit for the creation of a flag lot. You can make a motion to approve both at once as a package. You don't have to take them separately. And you don't need to close the hearings separately because you opened them together.
Okay, great. So the motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All right, then, because we're in a Zoom meeting, we need to take a voice vote, and I'll, I'll start over on my left with Krista. How do you?
Yes.
Yes, all right, Melissa?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
And Jenna?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Corinne?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes, so it's unanimous that the public hearing is now closed, so.
I vote yes.
Oh, Sam, there you are.
That's cool. That's cool.
So the public hearing has been closed. We can't ask any questions of the presenter. Are there any other questions or comments by the board? Or is there a motion to accept or not the application?
I would move to approve the flag lot and shared driveway applications.
Sam, are you saying something?
Yes, I'm sorry. Is it possible, just in terms of expediency, to like approve like a an A&R so that like Carolyn can just sort of rubber stamp it when I, so they made off the wait for that part of it?
You can, actually, you, and I was going to suggest that you do that either now or at the end, you could approve or, or vote to also have the plans endorsed that are the ones, plans that you see in front of you because you're taking this action to allow the special permit. You've done that in previous meetings, but it certainly would. Even though the plans haven't officially been submitted, the layout will be the same because they'd otherwise have to come back for an amendment. So absolutely, you could do that as, and that would be a separate vote. That wouldn't be lumped into this one, but you could certainly do it tonight. And then I just wanted to describe some of the DPW comments. I guess we probably should have, these got sent to the applicant. And also you all saw the DPW comments. And then in my staff memo, I mentioned that there are the trees at the front of the property look to be public shade trees. So the applicant would have to work with the city's tree warden in establishing the appropriate tree protection under very specific statutory requirements for that. So I would recommend that that be part of your conditions. Also, there was a comment, they are disturbing less than an acre as presented in the plan, so that doesn't trigger stormwater permit. But technically, under the DPW review process, they want an application for a waiver that's separate from the planning board. So you don't have to hold up your vote for that, but you might add that as a condition. There's also, in order to meet the traffic mitigation requirements for the city, any additional incremental increase in trips generated by a project, no matter how small, require some form of mitigation, the applicant make, can make a payment in lieu of actual physical improvements, and that's a formula in the zoning at one. Because it's far out, it's not connected on the city bike paths or sidewalks, then the, the district's further out, the mitigation is 3,000, a one-time payment of $3,000 in lieu of making improvements for the one additional unit.
Hello, hello. And if I can be heard, I just am joining the conference right now and I thought, I'm Geraldine Misa, and I'm a property owner on 30 Coolidge Avenue.
Geraldine.
Right behind.
Good evening. My name's George. I'm the chair of the committee. And which application, which application are you, are you interested in?
I think she said Coolidge, so I'm not sure, but you, you guys are not at that point right now.
Right, right. Can you hear us okay?
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, my phone is muting me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I own the property at 30 Coolidge Avenue. And it's been in my family since 1952.
Okay, excuse me, one, one minute. Could you identify yourself again?
Geraldine.
So Geraldine, we're not at that, we're not at that part of our discussion yet. We're talking about.
You're not at, are you on 29 Sherman Avenue?
No, that is coming up later in the evening. Okay?
Okay, it's like, it's like seven, it's 4:30. I'm in Oregon, so it's like 4:30, which is 7:30 your time in Hamp. So what, what do I do?
We'll be up to that next, Geraldine. Just hang in.
Okey dokey.
Hang in a little while.
Okay, that sounds great. I saw some people, I've got Zoom, I've never done Zoom before, and I just put it on my phone, and I'm using another phone to talk, so.
Glad to have you.
Beyond, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. So Carolyn has mentioned, I think, four other, four conditions for our application. And I, I assume the applicant got to see the comments on the DPW, and they're okay with them. So I guess, David, we're checking in with you to see if it's okay if we add those to your motion.
It's, it's fine with me. I guess it goes back to the question of whether those apply, whether I say it now or not, but sure, I'm happy to include the DPW comments as qualifications for the approval as well as the payment of the traffic mitigation fund.
Great. All right. So the motion has been made with the four conditions outlined by Carolyn. Any other discussions?
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, that was Melissa. Okay, thanks.
All right, hearing no other comments about the application, we'll go to a voice vote. So we're voting at this point on both the special permit and the site plan for the shared driveway and the flag lot. David?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
And Corinne?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes, I, I can't hear you very well, George.
Melissa? Can everybody else hear the chair okay?
You're definitely muffled.
So we're at Melissa.
You're okay in Oregon. You're okay in Oregon.
Krista?
Yes.
And where are we here? I think that's everybody. And George, I vote also. Chris, did we get you?
No and yes.
Thank you. All right. So it's unanimous to approve both the special permit and the site plan on North Farms Road. Now, does someone want to make a motion about the A&R?
I move to approve a, I guess provisional, what do you call it? What would you call this? The, the feature A&R for this property, the two properties at Wyman Farm Road.
At North Farms Road, okay.
North Farms Road, thank you.
Great. Yeah, I think it's a recommendation, Sam, but we get it. It's an approval, too.
For endorsement.
Endorsement. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Jenna gets the second this time. So the motion's been made in second to endorse the A&R on North Farms Road. Any and North Farms Road. Any discussing? The only thing I would say is, Carolyn, I guess the applicant still has to provide you a separate packet for this A and R, for the archives and.
Yep.
I would say, is there any, do we need to say anything like we endorse it or, you know, assuming it's qualitatively the same as what we've seen tonight?
That can't hurt, like felt suspenders, but yes.
Thanks for that addition, David. So I'm sure the minutes will reflect that. Okay, any other discussion? All right, so we'll go to a vote. Again, we'll start with you, David.
Yep.
And Jenna?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes also. So good work applicants, Mackler family. Good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is now 7:37 and we'll open up a public hearing for site plan for demolition and construction by sovereign builders. That's five townhouse units, 29 Sherman Avenue, North Hampton, MAP ID 25A, that's 99. And for the woman in Oregon and others who may be new to planning board, first, the planning board hears a presentation by the applicant. The planning board then discusses and clarifies any points of the presentation. Then we open it up to the public for their comments. After the public has shared, we'll move back to the planning board for other clarifications. If we've heard enough, then we'll close the public hearing or decide to continue it to a further date for more information. So without further ado, does the applicant have a presentation of 29 Sherman?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Christopher Carney. I work as a land surveyor and civil engineer over at our Lebec Associates. And tonight, I'm happy to be here on behalf of Sovereign Builders and Todd Zalera to request major site plan approval for a project on 29 Sherman Avenue. This would be five residential townhouse units. I lived on Sherman Avenue until April of last year, so I'm pretty familiar with this area. And I think I'll just jump right into it and start with the existing conditions and share my screen.
Question? Could I ask a question? I'm on the computer.
Yes, Geraldine?
You, George, you might repeat that questions from the public can come after the presentation and after the board has had a conversation.
Did you get that, Oregon, Geraldine?
No, I didn't. I, I'm trying to do it and you, could you say it one more time, please?
So the process is for the planning board that we get a presentation from the applicant.
Yeah.
And after the presentation, the planning board members ask some clarifying questions. And then, then we open it up to the public, the butters for any comments they might have about the project. And then it goes back to the board again, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I got that. I'm trying to look at the website now with the plans, you know, what they put on, on the city website. So that's what my question was about. So I'm trying to follow you with your talk. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, would you proceed?
Okay, as mentioned, we're here for a residential development at 29 Sherman Ave for five residential units, currently existing conditions on the property. There's an existing, I'd call it a multi-use building. It's a garage with additional accessory space. So a large footprint on this, and if we take a look at where the site sits in North Hampton, it's 29 Sherman Ave, and as we drop a person here on the street, we can get a look at how the property currently looks. So as you can see, it is currently a garage, three overhead doors, and then off to the right-hand side of it, there's a loading dock, not sure what that was used for. So the applicant proposes to demolish this and replace it with the five townhomes, as mentioned. Terrain on here is, it's, it's a pretty mildly sloped property. Generally, the high point is over here on the west side of the property. And it's slightly higher over here to the east and to the north, and that's because this is a low point within the neighborhood. Stormwater generally collects in this area to the northeast of the property. And because of that collection and that ponding that was occurring, the city in North Hampton, I believe, put in a catch basin here within the property. So there's a drain line that runs from Sherman Ave to a catch basin here in the northeast of the property. And then that drainage line continues to Coolidge Ave. I've been in discussion with engineering department, and there's no formal easement on this drain line. It's been placed, and I'm not sure how or when it was placed, but there's no legal rights from the city to maintain the drainage easement. So as part of this project, the applicant's going to be giving the city a 20-foot wide easement in order to maintain this drain line across their property. As you can imagine, a drain line like this, we wouldn't ever want to put a building over it. And as 20 feet in width, it really limits the way this property is being developed in the future because we're not going to be placing a building over this area. But again, terrain is a bit higher all around the perimeter of it, and this would be an onsite low point, and this is the existing mixed-use building, gravel driveway throughout the property. Generally, there are only two major trees here, a beech tree here and a beech tree here. You might have noticed on Google Earth that there was a maple tree here in the front that's been removed. So it's just those two major beech trees being the specimen trees on the site. There's some hedge rows to the northern side of the property. As part of the project, we're gonna try to protect these trees as best as possible. They're very nice beech trees. I guess I'll admit the amendment to the. So the first step of the project would be demolition and removal. First, we would demolish the existing multi-use building. Then we'd start placing erosion control, or in conjunction with that, we would place erosion control at the site, being an anti-tracking apron and a silk fence around the perimeter of the site, and that will help sediment be contained on the site, so it's not trapped into the road or spilled onto a burning properties. All the gravel areas within the site would also be removed. And as you can see, these trees would have protection. And there would be some saw cuts within the road for utility connections. On, onto the next sheet, this would be the proposed layout for the site. There would be a single curb cut driveway. Instead of primarily, there really are two curb cuts on the site. There are gravel driveways, so they're not really formal curb cuts, and there is no curb on Sherman Ave on this site. But this would be an 18-foot wide driveway proposed to access these five residential units. The residential units are about 2,128 square feet in living space. They're about three stories tall. We'll look at the architecturials after we go over the site plans. Also, as you can see, there's the 20-foot wide easement proposed on this property. And the buildings being set outside of that 20-foot easement. The grading of the property will match the existing drainage patterns of the site. As mentioned before, there is a low point right here. And so we'll, we're gonna maintain that pattern and keep stormwater flowing towards this low point. But a big benefit of this project to the city and all the neighbors is that we're gonna propose a fire retention area in this norvally corner of the property. And that'll help contain stormwater for not just this property, but for some neighboring properties. It'll fill up and then overflow into a beehive structure here and then flow into the catch basin. So this really gives the site some added stormwater storage, and it'll reduce the burden on city infrastructure so that other storm events can be handled more appropriately without flooding. Continuing to the drain, the utility plan. We're proposing one catch basin here to collect stormwater, and it would end at a flare-down section at the buyer retention area that I was discussing. Utility connections would generally be run on the outside behind the building. That would be water, electric and gas. I think gas currently is under a moratorium, but we're gonna show it on these plans in case that changes. Sewer connections would come from the front and connect to the existing sanitary sewer line in Sherman Avenue. And we're gonna propose a doghouse manhole over the existing sanitary sewer line and connect to that. All the roof leaders for these buildings, some of them will be contained within this subsurface drainage network. Other roof leaders will be allowed to drain on grade and flow naturally to this fire retention area. The landscaping plan, as mentioned before, these two beech trees, this one here and this one here, those specimen trees are being retained. Two more beech trees are proposed at the entrance of the driveway. There's also white spruce trees and some rhododendrons proposed around the border of the site. And then the buyer retention area is planted with wildlife species with high wildlife characteristics to promote and give a sanctuary to some birds and smaller mammals in the area. Next few sheets are detailed sheets, which I think we can skip over. But they detail all the different structures placed at the site as well as the buyer retention area. Think a good place to head from here is the architectural plans. As you'll know, on the layout sheet, this building fronts mostly on Sherman Avenue. And while the doorway or the garage entry is on this side, and originally, the front of this unit would have been on this side, you'll see that a sidewalk is proposed in order to enter the building on Sherman Avenue. And that's as required by your regulations. So we can look at what a typical building would look like. This would be the unit in the middle of the site. So that would be units three and four here. They would have a garage and an entry at the bottom layer, and then two floors of living space and a gabled attic. Or plants here. And these have been submitted as part of the site plan set. And then the back of the building has some windows in the deck off the back, as well as a basement access, basement slash garage access. The single unit, it's slightly different, so, but mostly the same. It's really a duplex cut in half. And where we come into the really customized design, and I want to thank Todd for preparing all these different architectural renderings for this project. I usually will only have one, but he was able to provide you with architectural details for all three buildings. The third building, being the one fronting on Sherman Ave, would look from the front primarily the same, except for the doorway is no longer on the front of the unit on the left, unit one. You can see the roof area here, and then you can see this side of the house facing Sherman Avenue has been dressed up so that it maintains the character of the neighborhood and looks like the front entry to a building. After submission, we received some comments from DPW and the tree warden. To me, all of those comments were pretty minor, and I don't think we'll have any problem satisfying all the conditions that DPW has requested. The tree warden had some comments about the species out there being red maple and beech. I think beech makes sense because it mimics existing trees in the area. So I think that would be a good choice to retain. The red maples will definitely swap out as necessary, and really, those beeches, if the tree warden would like them changed to a different species, we're willing to accommodate, of course. So I think at that point, that'll conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Very much. Questions from the board, clarifications?
Do we have a dumpster on site or some trash removal areas that we're, they're not seeing on here?
No, no dumpster proposed as part of the project. Trash bins would be wheeled to the curb. The same as everyone in the neighborhood.
Along those lines, any special plans for snow removal?
That was a comment from DPW, and we will be able to provide snow removal. The appropriate place would be over this drainage easement. It provides an area that will drain to the buyer retention area and be able to accommodate snow. Sometimes salts are used, but as a condition of approvals, it could be conditioned so that salts are not used in this area. That way, snow can be stored here in the grass area and flowed to the buyer attentionary without any worries. In the event of multiple storm events, snow would be trucked off-site as necessary.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go back to the trash removal. The trash is, it's not just like every other house, because these are single-family homes, but they don't have what would be all until 10, 10, 10 huge containers of trash. So where would you put those?
Why would every, why are there 10? Is it because of recycling?
Well, because you have recycle, you have recycling and trash, and if you have five units, that means you have 10 containers.
Right, sorry, let me introduce myself. Todd Zalera, Sovereign Builders. I'm the owner of Sovereign Builders.
Yeah, okay. So I mean, that's just a lot of containers, so that's very different than your neighbors.
I, I guess this parcel has approximately almost three lots worth of frontage. The lot frontage requirements for a single-family home would be 50 feet. I believe this project has about 130 feet of frontage. So if it was chopped up as an A and R and made it into single-family residences, you would have three units on here and six trash receptacles. So this project would really be four more trash bins than what is a by right use for this site.
But, but wait, okay, but you're not doing it by right. So I'm asking, so you have to come to me and ask for, you're asking for something, so I'm asking you where you're gonna put it.
Correct, so they would be lined up at, at this point, what is.
Where?
There's.
I'm sorry, I've had a very long day. I'm sorry for yelling at you, but I, but you telling me it's my right after I ask you a very polite question is not I'm, I'm past that point, so. What are we talking about?
I apologize. We have about 100 and 100 feet of grassed area here, as well as about 25 to 30 feet of grassed area here. I imagine these trash bins would be placed either in this 100-foot area or this 30-foot area. That's our current proposal.
Are you just referring to on pickup day? You're not, they would be probably be stored in the garages, correct?
Of course, of course, they would be stored and not visible from the street all times except for trash picking.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's what we were looking for, as opposed to having them four on the side of each garage for the neighbors and for our site. So Sam, if you want to propose that as a condition that trash containers are stored out of sight other than pickup day, you know, we could consider that. Thanks. Chris?
I mean.
Something?
Yeah, of course.
Can I ask you a couple of questions, George?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the wrong Chris responded. We have two Chris's here. Yes, go ahead, Chris Tate.
Okay. Real quick, I was just curious what the, the pretreatment is into that fire retention area? From your, your catch.
Yeah, great question. So this is a water quality unit, an inlet structure. It's a bare, through the water quality unit, but also with a catch basin grate, so that would be the first line of defense. And then the stormwater would be further treated in the fire retention area.
Okay, and then the only thing I was really worried about was that existing 28-inch beech tree, the the frontage tree. So it looks like you're proposing all of your underground utilities to go right through it. So I'm wondering how you're gonna keep it safe while you're also you know, putting the water, the gas, the electrical through there.
Yeah, it, it will be. Yeah, it will be difficult. These roots, you never know where the roots go and the dirt line of the tree is pretty extensive. Unfortunately, these plans, we can't overlay every sheet on top of each other. But while we're drafting, we have the ability to look at where the utilities are compared to the tree. And so we've done our best to route those utilities as far away from the tree as possible. And you'll
Well, luckily you have the tree on the plan right there.
We're trying to keep the gas as far away from it here in the water. And you'll notice the separation here to allow for the tree. So underground electric is closer than we would like it to be to the tree.
I mean, the, the gas is closer than I would like it to be from the tree as well. I hear that beach trees have a pretty robust root structure.
Yeah, the gas connection right now, I mean, it's very schematic. I think there is a gas moratorium in North Hampton and these connections won't be made at this point. As part of the DPW comments, they had the water line. They, they made a recommendation that the water line be moved to the fronts of the units. That would give us additional room in the back and possibly this underground electric line could be swapped with the water line to give the tree a little bit more.
I think they also had a comment that they don't really allow underground electric and public right of ways, private services. So do you have any thoughts of where your electric pole is going to be on your site? And then, and then I assume you'll transition to underground electric on site?
Absolutely. So we just got these comments today, so I can't say definitively where the utility pole would be placed. But this is the existing utility pole. It would make sense to place that utility pole in this general area, pretty much on the property line. That way, those easement issues are extinguished. So probably overhead from this utility pole to a utility pole here. And then that would have the drop connection to underground electric.
All right, it sounds to me like there's still some, some things to work out with the utilities. I don't, I don't know how much that's in our purview or not, but it's going to be changing from what we see in front of us.
I mean, I would just to clarify or jump in and add to your line of concern there, Chris. You know, the underground electrical utilities would be potentially have a significant impact to that tree. And so that whole review process is going to be dictated by the tree wardens. So it, it may in fact be they can't put the electrical utilities underground there. Given that the other comments about potentially national grid and DPW not wanting underground to go, you know, from the other side of the road and that they have to plant a pole anyway, they could probably put it anywhere. I mean, this is an opportunity to put it in a different place that doesn't affect that beach tree. So either right on the corner of the property or maybe even on the other side, there's another overhead that currently comes across. So you know, there could be other locations, but I think that's important for you all to consider in terms of whether or not you condition it that it can't be in the location they're showing because of the impact to the tree. Or that you may want to see a revised plan before you, you know, finally close the hearing. So it's a, a tool to sort of think that through.
Thank you.
I do think swapping the underground electric with the water line, moving the water line to the front would help a lot of these problems. We could place the power pole right here at the corner, as Carolyn had suggested, and put a drop connection that would run generally parallel with the property line substantially far away from the existing tree. But of course, we'd work with the tree warden, make sure that's appropriate. Just as a design consideration, the reason we kept the water here instead of, instead of in front is because we have a sanitary sewer line in front. We're always trying to keep water and sanitary sewer separate.
And in terms of the gas line, I think North Hampton and many communities are trying to help developers move away from providing gas connections, stable gas connections like that. So we might think about eliminating that gas line from the project and moving to something else. I'll leave that for you and developer to figure out what that does in terms of attractiveness for the units. If there are any other questions from the board, we might move into the public comment for a few minutes. Okay. So now, now is the opportunity for folks to speak regarding the application. Please either raise your hand electronically, using the toolbar or wave it. Or people on telephones, I believe it's a star or pound nine feature. Okay, very good. I see Martha Sulman. And just identify yourself and your address for us, please.
Sure, this is Mara Sulman. I'm at 27 Coolidge Avenue. Please tell me, just indicate you can hear me. I'm at Sun's master class, so there's a little bit of background noise. Can you hear me okay?
We hear you and your children pretty well.
I'm sorry, they're going back into the main room in a second. It's all down. So I have four issues I just want to
Hi Mara, I can hear Okay, so I have four, four considerations that I wanted to raise. The first is that ever since the construction occurred with the rotary and the two streets north of Coolidge are now not as accessible from Route nine, there's been a lot of increased traffic on Coolidge Avenue and Sherman. Because the people who live in the neighborhoods north of us are using those two roads to get to their homes now. Not a problem, happy to have my neighbors use the roads. However, that increased traffic and I think the fact that people don't live on the road that they're traversing has caused people to drive faster on Coolidge and Sherman. And I know this because I'm in the street a lot with my children and I walk my dogs a lot. And so I think it's going to be really important to add speed bumps to Sherman and Coolidge. If we're talking about increasing the traffic more with, you know, five additional units means probably 10 additional cars. So I want to make sure that this is on the radar of the planning board because it's already a problem even without these five additional units. The second point I wanted to bring up was, I understand there's a gas moratorium and it seems unlikely that we're going to be increasing gas, you know, available in the future due to North Hampton's commitment to decreasing greenhouse gases and sustainability. So what kinds of requirements are you asking for new construction? In terms of it being green and sustainable? Because I didn't hear the presenter talking about in any way how his construction is different than past construction. And a new unit just went up on Sherman recently and I don't know, you know, what, how it was built, what kind of sustainability it it takes into consideration, but I don't see any solar panels on it. So I'm guessing traditional construction is not taking into consideration North Hampton's very deep commitment to reducing our impact on climate change. And so I have a hard time understanding how any new construction cannot be made with maximum sustainability measures. So that was my second point. My third point is that these units that were described are really different than the existing units and buildings in our neighborhood. Most of our houses are capes, ranches, and we have a couple of two store, we have some two-story houses with attics. Most of the houses are smaller. My house, and I've lived in this neighborhood for 16 years. I moved in when my son was a newborn and now he's 16. My house is 1,200 square feet. It is plenty of space for me and two kids. So I don't understand why new construction is being proposed. Townhouses are being proposed a thousand square feet larger than mine and two stories taller than mine. I mean, we are getting to the point in our, in our society where we need to consume less. So why are we talking about building houses that are two stories higher and 1,000 square feet bigger than the other houses in this neighborhood? If we can live here comfortably with that amount of space, then I'm sure new residents can as well. And I also don't, I mean, I'm not adjacent to this property, so it isn't personally going to affect me. But the people who are adjacent aren't going to want to have buildings adjacent to their homes that are two stories taller than theirs. I mean, this is, this is a residential neighborhood, not a city. So they shouldn't have buildings that are towering over their homes. And then my final concern, this is probably the concern that I most, the biggest concern for me. You know, the housing market in North Hampton is outrageous right now. It's so expensive. My house itself has increased over $100,000 in value since I bought it, probably more. I'm not interested in selling, so I haven't really had it appraised. And you might think, congratulations to me, I have more assets. I think this is dismal. I think this is terrible news because that means that unless you are solidly middle class, you cannot afford to buy a home in North Hampton. And we've become a really exclusive community. It's not inclusive, it's not accessible, it's not welcoming of people who don't have economic privileges. And that's not the kind of community that I want to live in. It's, it feels very exclusive. And I would like to, a commitment that new construction, at least a certain percentage of it, be dedicated to affordable housing. So I don't know, are these townhouses going to be sold at market value? In which case, a house, a new building on Sherman just went for like over $450,000. I mean, that is well over what the existing houses are valued at. So if these townhouses are likely to sell for that amount too, which means we're going to have people coming into our neighborhood that are hugely privileged. And you know, is, is that what we want to be as a community? A community that only attracts and welcomes people who have economic privilege? I really, I'm embarrassed by that. I just went to a meeting last week where our town, I'll be off finishing one second, but our town adopted a resolution to raise the minimum wage for farm workers. And I attended that hearing and I was so proud of the decision makers in my town for doing that. If this, if our town is, if our city is not willing to commit to affordable housing, we're going in the opposite direction. And I guess I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you, Mara. And we'll try to respond to your points as the meeting goes on. Thanks. The next speaker up at the podium would be Victoria Monroe. Your address, please.
I'm at 38 Coolidge Avenue. I am right in back of all this construction. I think I'm the closest one to it as far as what my footage is and what I'm going to be looking out my window. I just wanted to say a couple of things and ask a couple of questions. One is, you know, my backyard is very quiet. There's no one around, it's very private. And I even have bushes up between my property and the property behind, mostly because I've been looking at that ugly building for 20 years and it's, it's not pretty. So we put up some bushes. But now these buildings, I was really shocked to hear they're going to be three stories high plus an attic. And so this is going to be what I look out of my backyard at. So I'm really not happy about that. I'm certainly not happy that all this construction is going to be happening. I have a couple of questions. So I'll just say them and if they get answered right away or later, that's fine. In one of the pictures, there's a line of bushes along the border, but then they for some reason stop where my property is. So I'm curious why? And I would like them to be there. So it's another layer of privacy for us. I'm wondering when this construction might happen? And what else did I have here? If there, it didn't look like there was any plan for any type of fence or anything on there. And I also wanted to just really back up Mara in everything that she was saying. I really appreciate her bringing those things forward. And that's my opinion and that's all, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I think this is our friend Geraldine in Oregon, 2086. You can unmute, unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hello. Okay, hi, my phone, when I unmuted, it went back on mute. Hello, my neighbor ladies. I'm at 30 Coolidge. It's the plan with the hedgerows there and I think that might answer Victoria's question. I don't know where, if the hedgerow is, that's our, our family property since 1952. And I'm really distressed over this. In fact, it like makes me tear up because it's, as the ladies have said, it's been a family neighborhood. We're all kinds of people and, you know, capes and a couple of houses that were a couple of stories. But we're a single family, you know, one level with the basement, a first level and an attic. That's the height. And it'll be three stories. I mean, that, that's unacceptable, totally unacceptable to me. And I think the other people too. I'm really going to start crying because this is very upsetting to me. And the gentleman said that by city, how big of a square foot, square foot area is what I, I'm asking about this plan? I don't know the actual size, you know, of the square footage. Because I knew they are Shambos since I was born. They were there a long time and I see this was bought for $200,000. You know, neither them and the, and Paul, the son that was there. So I'm really teary about this thing. I just got noticed today and this is very upsetting. I'm upset that there's this huge structure there. I'm upset that there's five squished in, you know, maximum. If you went by normal codes, it would be three, but you're putting in five. And I'm also concerned about the bio swill that you're proposing and how that's going to be in the snow. I mean, we lost a maple tree, I'm losing a maple tree in the front because of salt and stuff like that. So for you to dump the snow in the back of our, you know, on the back line of our properties, Victoria and mine are somewhere in there is just unacceptable. And, and I'm just, I gotta breathe a minute because this is just too much. I wonder if the houses are going to have a basement. I, I am against the three stories, you know, that's just not acceptable. And against the townhouse idea, you know, if you want to put three houses in there, maybe four in terms of a townhouse, but not five. I mean, I think that's greedy and, and if it needs to go with the city constraints, I just am so upset, so upset. I'm concerned about the electrical. And in terms of gas usage, I'm very, you know, I was recycling since, you know, forever. My, you know, and winter in New England is horrible. You know, we had an oil furnace and the oil deliveries didn't come because of the snow when I was a child. My father got mad, called the gas company and connected to gas. And you know, if the electric goes out, if your oil goes out, gas lines are still there to keep people warm in winter. You know, for children, for babies, for seniors, for everybody, you know? So I'm not against gas. I am actually know that it saved our family, you know, that winter when it was like, you know, sub, sub zero weather. So I have a concern about the gravel. Is it gravel, just the whole kind of layout with the gravel, with the bio swill? And the underground electric and that, that flooding area on the property that has, you talked about a 20 foot easement. I'm really concerned about all of that major impact on our, on our homes and safety. So the, there's a drain there in the corner of my property, my parents' property where the sheds are in there. There's a drain ditch and I didn't understand the man's, understand the man's talk about that, but that's a big thing. Victoria's property, when I was growing up, used to flood. They had a sump pump in there, you know? Our property didn't have that at 30 Coolidge. So drain, you know, I'm just, I'm concerned about that as well. And then in terms of the price of the houses, where are they going to be pitched at to be sold? That was something that was mentioned as well with, you know, affordability, how much of a value or what's the selling, you know, pre-sale price going to be for people? Are they going to get a special buy with a floor model? I, I just don't like it. And so I got like, I don't know, 12 points at least on that I'm questioning. And I guess that's about everything for now.
Thank you very much, Geraldine. Anyone else care to comment on the project?
Hi, George. I would, can you hear me?
Yes, could you give us your name and your address, please?
My name is Bob Perry, live at 15 Sherman Ave, right next door. I'd like to give Christopher a little education. That was potato storage. Anybody that lived on Sherman Ave would know that. So I don't feel like I'm going to be able to do anything to stop it. I think the North Hampton Government Planning Board and the zoning board should be ashamed of themselves. It's 29 Sherman Ave. 29 is one number. So here's some stuff. The beach tree, the 36 inch beach tree had a power line run through it. It's hurt. It's a beautiful beach tree. It severely needs to be trimmed. I've been picking up fallen branches for 35 years. I've always taken them away or burned them. Now I just pile them up on the other side. On my wife's and I property, we have a cherry tree that we planted 25 years On my wife's and I property, we have a cherry tree that we planted 25 years ago. It's pretty close to the property boundary. I'd like some kind of insurance that that tree is going to come out of this 100% safe. Christopher talked about planting a bunch of trees. There were, what, 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 what were they, Christopher? Christopher Carney? Beech trees.
I'm not supposed to respond directly to your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you remember, George?
Yeah, they're beech trees. That's what they proposed, beech trees and some pines, some evergreens.
Yeah, so those evergreens I would like to not see. I have apple trees and we have apple seed of rust already in the neighborhood and we just don't need it anymore. And and I don't want to see speed bumps. I want people to be mature and drive a speed limit. I have a car that does not handle speed bumps well.
Thanks, Bob. Bob, before you leave me, leave us, can you describe your house to us?
My house is two floors with a basement and an attic. It's the old original farmhouse. It's the house that used to be owned by the same people as the potato storage. It was built in 1910.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that not all the houses in the neighborhood are small ranch homes.
No, no, it's just the bulk of them.
Okay, good.
Which side of this, which side of the development is your house on? If you're looking at the development, are you on the right or the left?
The right.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's my garage in the drawings.
You bought the Parsons house? Did you buy the Parsons house, Bob? Right? The farmhouse? Yeah, hi, I'm Geraldine Nisa. Yeah, we're, we're an old neighborhood, you know, and we're, this is just despicable. I'm sorry. Mrs. Parsons used to plant lilacs there and where that potato shed was, there were lilacs that I stole from her for years. You know, so you've got a history here and people that love this community. And you coming in and buying the Archambos plot for $200,000 and developing this big conglomeration is just not good. I'm sorry, I'll shut up.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Either for or not opposition to the application? Okay, all right, hearing none, I think we'll turn it back to the board for questions and discussions. I could start maybe with a few of the questions that were raised by the abutters and I would ask either Mr. Solora or Christopher Carney to respond to them. One is, you know, the city is looking at how we get to net zero with new construction. Maybe you could explain a little bit about what kind of construction techniques and materials you'll be using on these houses.
Sure, these, these are, they're all, they'll all be code compliant and they'll, they'll, they have to comply with the latest energy code. They're, they're, I'm proposing to use heat pumps as that source of heating. We do like to use gas for hot water and most people like to cook with gas. So modulating flame gas, hot water heaters are very efficient. They're not storing any hot water. There's an, it's an on-demand type of hot water. So it's very efficient. And so if gas is available, that would certainly be a desired resource for utility for the structures. The building height, some questions were asked, the buildings would not, they'll be in compliance with code. They will not exceed, you know, the 35 foot, which is allowed by the building code. They're 1,400 square feet. They're not, so I'm not sure where, you know, was asked that or stated that they were 1,000 greater than 1,200. They're, they're 1,400 square feet each unit is. So sorry, I I answered more than your one question and they're.
That's okay. If things go well, Mr. Solora, when would you anticipate that construction would begin?
It's it's variable, it's tough to tell, to be honest with you. So it would be certainly within the timeframe of the expiration of the permit. I guess greater than that or, you know, more, more accurate than that. It's hard for me to say right now because of many things. And one of which being fly chain and cost of material. The market is changing a little bit. So within, within the timeframe, hopefully next spring is my, that's, that's my hope is next spring. But certainly before the permit runs out. And I don't really know what, what, what length of time is typically allowed for this permit.
Thank you. Just to be clear, the 1,400 square foot is the footprint, not the size of the unit.
I guess I should clarify that.
No.
The wrong numbers came from me. So let me share my screen again and we can go over the square footage exactly and the heights as well. So as shown on the plan, the footprint of each unit is 700 square feet. There's three-story units, so there's 2,100 square feet of space within the unit, but only the upper two floors are living space. So as Todd mentioned, there's 1,400 square feet of living space. That's confirmed on these plans, which show a garage area that is completely used for simply vehicle storage. As far as the heights go, the height is measured as required and recommended by zoning bylaws. And as to the middle of the gable of the roof, these are 10-foot stories, which is a little smaller than many of the houses in the neighborhood. And when standing out in front of the house, I believe we had Bob, who was a neighbor, neighbor next door over here in this house. So the height of this house is probably about 28 to 30 feet. Then as we move down the street this way, we're going to notice that some of the houses are single-story ranches, but some of the houses are not single-story ranches.
Thank you. Could, could you speak to the plantings that go along the rear lot line? That separates the project from the abutters?
Absolutely. I'm looking at these plans, there's always some confusion looking at plans like this. Pretty complicated. So we're going to look at this planting plan and you'll see the white spruces here, right? And then a gap in between the white spruces, as as noted before. The reason for that gap is there's an existing arborvitae hedgerow in this area. So we're just going to maintain existing shrubs that are on the applicant's property and then supplement them with the white spruce trees. These trees, some of them were placed near the drain line and the DPW had a comment to have these spruces moved at least 10 feet away from the subsurface drainage line. So this spruce tree and this spruce tree likely will get moved left and right. As far as the bio retention area, I know there were some comments about that. This is going to be a big improvement to the neighborhood. The way this structure will work is that all the water from the neighborhood will collect in this, I'll call it a ponding area. It's planted with species that have high wildlife characteristics and it will be primarily dry. Then in storm events, it will fill up. And the way it fills up is is shown on this detail here where there's a, it'll pond up here. There's underground drainage lines that will help the water enter the ground. But then once it hits a certain elevation, it'll overtop into this structure and then spill into the catch basin that is currently being used. So really in most storm events, and I I can go through the drainage calculations, but for the the two-year storm event, for instance, this puddle will not reach the overflow elevation and will not even hit the city infrastructure. That's a big benefit to the city. Currently, water just flows into that catch basin untreated. It has sediments within it and it enters the city's infrastructure. After this project, much of the neighborhood will enter this ponding area and never discharge into the city infrastructure.
Thank you. Victoria Monroe.
Hi, I just, I wanted to comment on the arborvitae that was mentioned. So we, as of last year, were considering taking those down and trying to replace them and decided we can't afford it, but they are really getting old. And I would request that we not rely on them being there. But I think that those trees should continue all the way to give us more privacy, especially since this is like, you know, very, very close to our yard. And right at the edge is where we have our greenhouse and shed, which is on your plans. The greenhouse is not, but the shed is. And that's where we spend most of our summer. So I would appreciate that if possible.
Would the applicant be willing to take that into consideration, bearing the responsibility of removing the old arborvita and planting new ones?
I think it's, it's, it's reasonable and sure, of course, we want to get along in the neighborhood. And that's, I think we'd be happy to look at, work with you on that.
Thank you. Just real quickly around the comment about speed bumps and traffic. The planning board unfortunately can't drill down to that level of detail too much. That is something that you can bring up with your city councillor, your Ward Three councillor, who's also a member of the transportation committee. And they can look at those streets and decide if kind of the level of service demands that kind of mitigation of speed bumps or stop signs or, you know, any kind of other traffic signage. But unfortunately, that's out of our purview for this type of arrangement. We're just want to make sure that there's parking on site for cars and that the amount of traffic that adds to the neighborhood does not become dangerous, does not go beyond the level of service. Carolyn, do you want to speak to that at all?
I am, no, I mean, I think you covered it. The, the Transportation and Parking Committee makes recommendations as well about, based on data, whether or not, you know, there has to be study done first to determine what the issues are, if there are any issues. And so you're right, though, the board doesn't have the jurisdiction just to say, okay, applicant, you need to install speed bumps because I'm not sure that any evaluation of that has been conducted to this date. And so the process is as you spelled it out.
I would encourage you to talk to your city councillor, though. I mean, I'm sure with all the traffic pattern changes with the roundabouts and things, that people are waiting to see what the new traffic patterns bring. And I would imagine there's going to be some changes and speed mitigation fixes around the city as we change the overall traffic patterns. I think there's also some weird kind of old paper streets that are in there where there's houses built in a public right of way and things like that that could, could also be addressed. But that's nothing the planning board can help you with, unfortunately. Talk to your city councillor, I think it's a good thing to to speak up about.
Just while we're on traffic, Carolyn, you mentioned a couple of times in the staff report, the proximity of this development to the rail trail. But I don't think there's really any access, an official access to the rail trail from this neighborhood.
Correct.
Other than, right? They have.
Right, just along the street and yeah. But there is a requirement for, as with the previous application, you know, for traffic mitigation, for increased trips that are generated by a project. So every new project proponent needs to address their incremental impact. And so as in stipulated in the zoning, because there are five additional units, there's a formula for that unless the applicant's proposing, you know, some off-site physical, you know, improvements to that value. And it's based on the total number of new units.
Thank you. And just real quickly on Ms. Solman's comments and concerns about affordable housing. You know, we we can't enter all of that tonight, but Northampton doesn't have inclusionary zoning at this point. Whereas if a developer comes into town within certain limits and ceilings, they do not have to propose affordable housing along with their market rate housing. That's done solely upon the volunteer efforts of a developer, especially at this level. There has been a lot of affordable housing, let's say, advances within the city, especially on Pleasant Street and other areas. And there are more in the works. But in terms of a private developer with a small development, there's nothing in our books to say that 25% of those units need to be at any kind of affordable rate. But let's turn.
I like, I guess I'd like, I I guess I'd like to comment on that. I mean, I, I think that, first of all, I applaud the, the, this, this project. I think having five units that sort of allow for families to live within a fairly, actually, small footprint is, is actually a very good thing. And is the type of zoning that we, we should be championing. And then in terms of, in terms of affordability, you know, small developers are constrained by the cost of materials. And the materials are very expensive. And the notion that somehow Todd can somehow wave or wand and lower the cost of materials, I'm sure if he could do that, he would lower the cost of his, of his rent, of his rentals, but can't do that. So I think asking him to do that is unfair and not realistic. And I also like to point out that if you chose, anyone can sell their, their, their personal property for, for any amount they want to sell it for. So if anyone is really worried about the cost of housing and you want to lower the cost of your housing, then sell it for, sell it lower than what the market bears. And, and you have helped, helped the situation. One of the, my comment, one of the, one of the reasons to, to offer this type of product is to offer a lower entry barrier into the area. So because they are small, although they will be market rate, it certainly would be less than many or most of the new homes being built in Northampton.
Thank you. So back to Ms. Solman, you have another comment?
Yes, thank you. I had two questions. One, what was exactly the height of the building? Did you say they were comparable to the building that's adjacent to it?
I believe they said it's approximately five feet taller than the other abutter, Bob and Heather.
So, so the way that building height is, is measured is measured to the midpoint of a gable roof. That's a pretty standard practice. And per the drawings that were shared, the midpoint of the gable roof is 33 feet. The height limit in this neighborhood and this zoning district is 35 feet. So presumably anybody in the neighborhood could tear down their Cape House and build a house of similar height without even coming to planning board.
Another question, Ms. Solman, or?
Well, I just want to respond to Ms. Taylor's comment that folks in the neighborhood should sell their homes. I guess.
I said you could, you could.
Yeah.
I said you could.
Where are you proposing that folks live?
That's, that's not my, that's not my point. My point is, is asking a private developer to do that when you could choose to sell your house for whatever you want to, is your problem.
I, I, I'm not implying that I'm asking a developer anything. I'm implying that our, our planning boards should take into consideration what kind of city we want to create, whether we want to create an inclusive city or one that's unaffordable. But I do hear what you're saying, that because there are no regulations requiring a certain percentage of new development to be affordable, that there's no mechanism to do that. So I guess what I'm asking for is impossible under current regulation. And regulations would have to be changed to create a priority for affordable housing. And that currently is not a priority, apparently, in the city of Northampton.
I think housing affordability is one of the issues that we're dealing with as a country and honestly, as a civilization. I think you'll find that the places with the highest amount of areas that have what we call inclusionary zoning mandates to provide affordable housing are the cities that have the worst affordable housing crises in the country. So there's a long debate about cause and effect to have there, but I don't think we're going to solve it in this meeting. And we certainly don't have the, the authority to demand it anyway. Meeting and we certainly don't have the, the authority to demand it anyway, as you stated, so.
George, I don't know if it, or if the board wants me to sort of review for the public who hasn't participated in a lot of the conversations the planning board has had over the last nine months and year. And even beyond that, about the different types of housing and attainable housing. Efforts as well as the affordable housing definitions. I'd be happy to, you know, speak to that if you'd like.
Carolyn, maybe you could point them to where that is on the website instead of taking up time in this meeting for that.
Okay, sure. Yeah, or anybody can contact me offline to find out the rules and regulations that the board and the city council has adopted. And in the effort to try to create a whole panoply of types of housings to, to fit in different, for different market needs. So. It's not that individual, each individual project needs to meet a certain target, but it's really looking at the bigger picture for the entire city.
Thank you. Okie dokie, we'll go back one more time, the last time to. Victoria Monroe and Geraldine out in Oregon, because we do have other items on the agenda. We have more questions for the applicants, so. We need to keep this moving. Victoria?
Mine is really quick. My husband just phoned in because he had a question as well, which I totally didn't think about, but we have solar panels. And I am worried about the angle of the houses, if they're that tall, that they're impacting our solar panels. So I would really request that somebody work with us and make sure that that's not happening.
Mr. Solora, Mr. Carney, could you? Speak to that?
I think the angle of the building. So of course we've been discussing how this property is located in a low point in the neighborhood, so that it will be beneficial to you. As well as a building that is 35 feet. In height will not impact solar panels because the angles that solar panels need are more overhead and. You're be looking at it an angle of about 15 degrees from some, from the horizon. To the top of this building and you're not going to get light because it will be blocked by other trees in the neighborhood.
Yeah, just considering the, any trees that you're planting as well, especially along that back row like we were talking about.
Yeah, I mean, the white spruce as proposed.
Thank you. All right, Geraldine, 2086.
Hi there. I just. I just, when Victoria was talking about that back hedgerow there and the tree, are those circles supposed to be trees that are going there? Or just bushes?
They're, they're supposed to be beech trees and white spruce.
That's a. That's a lot of trees for that area. There's a lot of trees and we've got established maples. The house next door to me, to the right of me is the Samoas's that have been there since the 60s. And they've got a, some maple trees there as well. And I don't know about the roots, but. Victoria, you have, you talked about, somebody talked about taking out the Arbividae. I don't know if you're thinking of doing that in mine or Victoria has hedgerows, but I, I think that's a consideration. My father started those from twigs and they grew into a hedgerow, so. They're precious to me, so I needed to clarify that. Thank you.
And, and I think Geraldine, we're, we're moving towards asking the applicant to go back and discuss the planning plan with our tree warden. To make sure that the species are suitable, both in kind of their, their, the nature of their height and width and also. How they impact the neighbors. So I think they'll be coming back with a revised look at those. Okay.
So is, is a five building plant, is the five, five spaces a. Set in stone kind of thing, or is that open to discussion and restating the amount of housing there in that number 29 Sherman like Bob said?
That is.
That was my other question.
That is what the applicant has proposed. Three.
Okay.
Buildings comprising five units. So.
Yeah, okay. So it's a proposal. Gotcha. Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for calling in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad I could. Thank you. I have another Zoom caller.
Other questions from the planning board? Or public who hasn't spoken yet?
So. I'm a little concerned. I'm not quite sure which part of the, of the design standards this falls under. But it was kind of identified in the application as sort of. It related to the sort of asking for leniency on the, on the entrances facing the street. And noting that the, for the front unit. They changed the. What looks like a book plan, you know, pattern book plan to just rotate that entrance to face the street per. Zoning ordinance, which I guess is a good thing. My worry is that this is clearly a. I mean, this is a, a, a townhouse plan that is clearly meant to be like the end of the row on the kind of a side street. It's not a, it's not a design for a house that is meant to be facing a street. Again, I'm struggling to understand exactly how that falls under our purview because, you know. Like, like we talk about all the time, like anyone with a single family house can put a weird window in their house. There's no review, you know, so. I, I do worry though, that this is not. Creating a particularly pedestrian friendly experience on Sherman. Not because of the bulk necessarily, which I think could be worked out. It's really, there's a lot of blank walls. There's a couple of these townhouses that like, you're going to be seeing a lot of sidewall. From different angles and I understand the urge to do an economical project that can be sold. You know, I know what things cost these days and what lumber costs, et cetera. But I'm just wondering, you know, did you look at different options? Did you look at option? And I, I also appreciate that the garage doors are on the side of the building, not the, you know, not the front. But at least in the front units, but also, you know, did you look at a layout where you could maybe put those garage doors on the back? You know, there's plenty of designs for rear. Loading townhouses that give a little more street presence, a little friendlier. In, in what is a very pedestrian scale neighborhood currently.
I, I'm sort of taken back at, at the comments about the aesthetic because we spent a lot of time and effort. To make these and it's something that looks pleasing to the eye. And this is not sort of run of the mill. These aren't running mill structures. The, the reason for less windows on the, on the gable ends of these is further proximity from one building to the other. And what would be required to have a fire rated window, which is just, yeah, astronomically expensive and. Literally impossible. So the buildings, because of the. One building to another, the proximity from, from one to the other, the wall, the sidewall, those buildings are fire rated. And they have to comply with a, a fire rating code.
I'm mostly asking, sorry, I'm mostly asking about the, I guess it's on drawing. One, the left side elevation, which is the street facing elevation of the southernmost unit. It's just, you know, I mean, again, it, it comes down to, again, Carolyn, can you chime in? I don't know where this falls.
Open to change on that. I mean, and we spent a fair amount of time to get to that, but if that. You know, people have suggestions. I'm, I'm, I'm open to it.
I agree with you, David, too. It looks a little awkward there, even with the porch. But then the big blank wall. And I realize it's a garage behind there, but if they could do something to that, I think it would help that. Sidewalk appeal. Carolyn, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, I was, no, not at all. I was just going to respond to David's comments that. You know, there was back and forth between myself and the applicant about how to meet that standard. I think the intention is really to have the full front of a structure facing the street. The way it's written is the front door has to face the street and this is the way the applicant. Chosen to do that. There's been a lot of discussion about, I mean, I think the. It certainly meets. The letter of the ordinance, probably not the intention.
Would you be, would you be open to extending that entry, the covered entry into like a full porch across that? I know it's a garage behind there, so you can't really put windows and stuff, but could you? I mean, do something like that? That would be something more like a, you know, a friendly gesture towards the neighborhood?
We, we absolutely could put windows. So, and I would be okay with that. We, we, we could probably, you know, not that. A two by two square window that looks, that's on the upper part of that blank wall that looks in above a car. So we're not looking at it at the side of a car. But yeah, we, we could also extend the porch. I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
While we're on the driveway or the, the exterior of the homes, there was a. A concern, I guess, by the planning office and the DPW about the width of the driveway being 18 feet rather than 15. Will, do you have any objection to? Moving that back to 15 feet?
So let's. Chris, can you?
I think 18 feet will allow for two cars to pass by each other. It will be tight. There would be nine foot drive aisles, but because of the amount of. Residents in here and morning and night, there could be traffic conflicts coming in and out. I did speak with Carolyn, I think 15 to 18 feet might be acceptable based on your zoning regulations. It's worth a higher edge of the top edge of that at 18 feet of width. And that's the width we're requesting at this point.
Yeah, I wasn't clear on why 18 feet wasn't. A good number.
It's just, it's wider than a typical driveway that, that, as people are pulling in and out, it's not, it's not like a road. You can see. People who are wanting to enter the site while you're pulling out. So I don't think there would be a huge conflict point. It's really more about the amount of asphalt. Right there in that one area and to the extent that it could be narrowed. And additional. Landscaping to sort of mask some of that asphalt is, is really the, the point. But the planning board, I think DPW's comment was more that the planning board has to approve that with. As part of which you would as any kind of. Plan that you're approving. Because 15. Feet is the maximum unless you approve otherwise.
Could we do something like a. I have no idea of the cost of this at all, but could you do something with a 15 foot and, and then some sort of. Like a brick, a brick. Sort of walk, walkway that's at, at the road level so that people can pass?
There's no, there's no sidewalks at this, on this street.
I, I, I understand that. I was just trying to make it so that. You don't have 18 feet with. Asphalt.
Having it at 15 feet will. Unconsciously make. Your tenants, the homeowners slow down when they're coming in or leaving the spot too. And I think certainly think there's enough room there for two cars to pass each other. I certainly don't feel at this point, there's enough. Reason to kind of go past those maximum requirements that we have. Speaking of the extra pavement though, I wonder, Mr. Carney, if you could just walk through real quickly the open space chart. For us, because I'm a little confused on how much. I know we're taking down a very big building with a large impervious surface, but I wonder what it's like in the new construction.
So we can look at the zoning table. For the open space calculations that were submitted and open space, we're proposing 68% of the site as open space. And with a 40% requirement.
So we're back to something where the planning board has struggled before, kind of our visuals of the plot plan of the new construction. It doesn't appear that. 70% of this finished product is open space. To my visual eye. I can't, of course, go to this site and walk it now. But you have a driveway. What is the, what is the materials of the parking area and driveway in front of the units?
Yeah, so they're all bituminous concrete. And so the original iteration of this plan, we had parking spaces provided along this east side of the parking area. And this drive aisle was 24 feet in width. That was deemed to be too large and these parking spaces to the right were omitted and this driveway was shrunk down to 18 feet as recommended. As far as the calculation for open space, we, we use AutoCAD and follow your definitions for open space from your zoning bylaws. It's an accurate number at 68%.
Thank you. And the retention.
Visually deceiving.
Visually deceiving. Okay.
I agree.
Okay, other questions from the board?
Sorry, just to be clear, the driveway is not included in the open space part of that calculation?
I can pull up your regulations, but it was calculated based exactly from your definition of open space in your zoning bylaws.
Okay, just be, just answer the question. Is the driveway part of the open space or part of the built space?
I, I will look that up and determine what the definition is.
Well, that's the definition. I don't, I don't, I know what the definition is. I'm saying, I think we need to be clear that you're actually showing us what the right. Areas are. I mean, usually sometimes we see like the, this driveway is 500 square feet, the house is 1,400 square, whatever, you know, like just break it down a little bit.
We can show detailed calculations for open space. I, I mean, I can open up AutoCAD. It would take a couple of minutes, but we could, we could look at it in AutoCAD and come up with.
I appreciate that offer, but we'll, we'll look at it further. Carolyn, I don't know if you have any suggestions. You're still above, certainly below the, above the minimum for what's expected in this district. We just have, as a course of action, been looking at these lately because they have been visually deceiving. And we need to get a better handle on how these are calculated.
Yeah, I'm not sure sidewalks are included. I think there's some, some omissions to what open space is. It's not a straightforward definition.
Other questions from board members?
I would just say in any event, it does visually look like they're meeting the 40% threshold. So I don't know exactly if they're at 68 or whatever above that, but I think they're meeting the threshold. So I'm not sure. We need to see more numbers, but it does seem like this is a question that's coming up more and more frequently. So yeah, Carolyn, I don't know if there's a way we can ask applicants to. Be prepared for that and have better numbers or better visuals that can help us because it is really hard to look at the plans and, and make sense of the numbers that we see. I'm not concerned about it in this case, but broadly, I think it would just ease the process for future applicants.
Thank you. So if the board feels like they have enough information from the public and the applicant. We can move to close the public hearing or we could go through the conditions before we close the public hearing to make sure. The applicant has a chance to discuss those. Do you want to help us do that, Carolyn?
Yeah, that would be great. And as you talked. A bit about. Issues. Regarding trash removal and, and landscaping. And so I think there's probably some other ones. There were some comments from DPW that. The applicant went over a bit. I think the. The, the issues that I've identified. Prior to the hearing, as well as the items that came up in the hearing relate to. Making sure there's adequate tree protection for those beech trees that are being proposed to be saved. One of them will be. You know, under the jurisdiction of the city tree warden anyway. The other one, again, beech trees are very sensitive to construction and so. We would recommend that the board add a condition that an arborist oversee. Air spading of the roots prior to any construction. And that tree protection for that beech tree on the private property side, not the city tree. Be conducted and that that be done before construction. They're proposing. Infiltration, the, the bio retention basin has an operation and maintenance plan that's been submitted in the application. And so. The zoning ordinance requires that an operation and maintenance plan be recorded at the registry of deeds for the future owners. So the owners buying in and understand what their maintenance responsibilities are. That. They've identified that, but we need to make sure it's recorded at the registry before. Construction starts. Related to that, there was a comment in the hearing about. Salt and maybe in the applicant was proposing, maybe that they would do snow storage. In the, over the. in the over the easement area. However, that's really hard to enforce, especially long term. And so I think it may make sense more to understand if there are any maintenance responsibilities that are in addition to what's been identified that would address you know, removal of or different ways of maintaining the bioretention area if there are or under the presumption that there would be salts applied. And so there may be a little bit more information that you want to get about that as opposed to trying to impose a condition that no salts be used on the asphalt, because I think there's just no capacity to enforce that. Also, the easement as offered by the applicant for the underground storm drain that's already there should be recorded in accordance with the city standards for easement prior to construction. Some of the detail sheet should be cleaned up as discussed. I think there's, and this went to the applicant as well. The detail for tree protection for the city tree should be modified to require a chain link fence. And also, sorry, I lost my place here. There was been discussion about alternative trees to beaches along the frontage in yes, the trees that are there appear to be healthy. They probably need to be pruned, but adding additional asphalt and and ice and snow treatment could potentially have impacts, and the city does not recommend beach trees to be in an urban setting where that close to the street. So I did. There are. There's a list that the applicant can shoot from which the applicant can choose. It does not require a review by the tree warden, because that's not their warden's jurisdiction to approve private trees. And then we talked about the five thousand dollar payment in lieu of traffic mitigation for the five units. That's a one-time payment. Talked about not having dumpsters on on site and having garbage stored within the individual garages other than on pickup days. And I don't
Can I just jump in? Sorry. There will be dumpsters during construction, just for the neighbors.
Right. This is regular refuse removal. And I don't know where you all came down on the driveway narrowing. We didn't talk about lighting, exterior lighting, but probably want to make sure discussion about the maximum color temperature. Typically, you've required no more than three thousand K. And then there was one other issue. Oh, about the porch. I don't know if you want to see the drawings of an extended porch along the front or if you just want to put a condition that the porch be extended along that front unit, you know, number one.
I'd be happy with that. Just just that condition, just a porch to cover the blank wall on that unit.
I'd I'd also be amenable to ask to continue the hearing for a couple of weeks and ask the applicant to come back with some more definitive plans and some of those revised drawings. I think that would be helpful moving forward for us rather than trying to condition all of these. I don't I know every construction project wants to continue moving forward. It's a little bit more expensive to revise drawings, but I think the list that Carolyn gave us was quite robust. And I I certainly want to have some more information about the utility lines and how that is going to be handled about a new pole location, perhaps an alternative to the water, whether we're going with gas. And that would be helpful also to be seen on plans.
I would also add, this is going to be split systems. So we heard, right?
Heat pump. Yes.
Right. So just there's a number of your outdoor side units that have to be located somewhere. I think you have plenty of nooks and crannies in your design to sort of shield those. So I don't think it's a big issue, but I think you might as well show those.
Yep, those are becoming more and more prevalent in our society for sure. Yeah, and they they're unobtrusive, but obtrusive. So
How would you like to request a continuation to the next meeting?
Sounds like we should do that. Yes.
I think all the items are pretty clear with, with the exception of the arborites on the northern pedro. I think one butter had hoped they would be removed and one butter had hoped it would be saved because they were planted with twigs. We don't have contact information from them, so I think we're going to lean on the board to provide a recommendation for those.
I I would say you can only remove the arborite that are on your property.
They are.
Hi, you have contact information for me. I'm the owner of the property and I'm listed and I sent an email to see Mitch. I can think that's the lady that's been speaking. So my email is available as well.
Thank you.
That's at thirty Coolidge with the arborita.
Just seems like and and it's going to be a difficult
I was at the site recently, and even though I'm not a certified arborist, I agree with the first butter that they're they're pretty old. There's quite a bit of overcrowding. There's quite a bit of dead dead limbs and foliage there. I think if they don't, you know, I think a new new arborita would certainly help the tenants who are going to be there in the future and also the future of butters in Miss Monroe's house. So from this one board member, I would suggest that they were removed and replanted with new healthy arborita.
Could we request existing site photos at the boundaries? It might help clarify for everybody what we're talking about.
Pictures of the arborite? Sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't understand what you're saying about you're just going to cut down my arborites on my property, sir. On thirty Coolidge, is that what you're trying to say?
No, Geraldine. As I understand it, the arboritas in question are on the new owner's property. They're part of the old, the current property we're talking about. They're not on your property. Some of them may extend into the butter's property, but the the plants themselves are owned by Mr. Solora at this point.
I'm gonna just interrupt and say, no, those arborite are mine, and they're on thirty Coolidge Avenue, just so you know.
Well, then, thanks for the correction.
I'm not understanding.
So I think there's a there's there are issues that obviously need to be worked out. You're you have one hearing on October twenty eighth. So you have, other than that, you have time on the agenda to take this item up. I would recommend that you put it at seven o'clock, even though the other hearing was scheduled for seven, and this just go above that, because there are some very distinct items that, you know, you can that the applicant can come back and address, including I mean, I think this property was the survey is been submitted for this property. So I think the property line should be fairly clear, although the applicant might want to walk the boundary with the butters to show the property lines and clarify any concern about issues about the ownership of of the vegetation that's currently there. So I think two weeks probably gives them enough time to do that, but they can let you know if that's not enough time for sure. And then otherwise, it would be November eighteenth.
I believe we can get it all done within those two weeks.
Right. Is there a motion to continue this public hearing until October twenty eighth at seven o'clock?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we'll go through a vote. That means for the public here, you'll have another chance to speak during the public hearing on October twenty eighth. If new information comes up that you want to discuss. So the motion's been made. Is there any discussion on the continuation? All right, so we'll go to a voice vote on the continuation to October twenty eighth. Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Jana?
Yes.
And Corinne?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Melissa? Krista?
Yes.
And the chair says yes also, so it's unanimous. Thank you, folks, for your time. Applicants, butters.
Thank you all for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Your work and my things.
I'm gonna suggest that we have a two-minute break, since I've been sitting here for two hours. I need to move certain parts of my body around.
Can we take a vote on that, George?
I don't think so.
I think he has jurisdiction.
It's nine oh six on my computer. I'll see you back here at nine oh nine. Couple of weeks ago, I went to a meeting of the downtown business association and Carolyn did it hybrid. There was a face-to-face meeting. I think Jeff Squire was there. That might be in our future. We'll see as the COVID numbers keep going down. Let's hope we'll get to meet face to face at some point. Carolyn, let us know when you're back and we'll kick things off.
I'm back. You can go ahead.
Righty. So thanks for the short interruption. So we'll now at nine twelve open up a site plan special permit amendment by Sunwood Development Corp. For to add four apartment units above garages at ninety-five Barrett Street, North Hampton, Mass. MAP ID twenty-four B DAS two. So this is a special permit, an amendment. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Right here. Yep. Perfect. So Jeff Squire here from the Berkshire Design Group on behalf of Sunwood Builders and Shaw Perry, who I think is is here tonight. So just a quick preface. This this isn't a project that I have been intimately involved with. I'm covering for another partner. So if there's a couple of questions that I can't answer, I'll defer to others on the line or Shaw, and please bear with me, but hopefully this I'll I'll try to be brief and make this as as quick as possible, given the given the time that we that we're at. So if I've got the ability to share, great. Thank you. So this project is at ninety-five Barrett Street. If the board recalls or just a little bit of history back in two thousand fifteen, there was a special permit granted for for a project for twelve, four buildings. It was twelve new units. There was one renovated unit in the center of the site. There were garages associated with the with the project and other parking and sidewalks and a patio in the park and some other amenities. So that was approved in two thousand fifteen by the board. Two thousand nineteen, the project was largely complete. All the units had been occupied. And so now we are here before you for requesting a permit amendment to essentially convert. Now, see if I can go convert some of the garage units that were previously proposed in the north portion of the site to to two-story apartment buildings, a combination of two-story apartment buildings and and garages. So the original site plan, I'll just zoom in a little bit. Particularly, this is really the focus of this amendment request is in this northern portion of the site. Sorry, I just go back. So the original, the original plan that was approved had four garage, single-story garage units in this building, four garages in this building with a recycling area for the units that were elsewhere on the on the property. This amendment is requesting an adjustment of those garages to to be a two-story buildings with apartments and associated garages, essentially the same footprint. So just to bring the board up to speed as to where where things are at, one of the things that we did do as part of this request is is start a a new site survey and an existing condition survey different from what was established in the in the beginning of the of the project back in two thousand fifteen. So this is a clearly updated survey showing the buildings as they currently exist, utilities, you know, all of the various infrastructure that was installed is is as part of that two thousand fifteen You know, all of the various infrastructure that was installed is part of that 2015 permit. The proposal now is to, as I said, is limited to the, oop, I'm sorry. Is limited to this northern portion of the site. So what you see in here is yellow is really limited to, is really the the limits of what this project or this amendment request is limited to. So it entails these buildings in the back. There's an area in the central green that we're proposing five additional parking spaces. A relocation of the recycling shed that was currently located at the end of this building. But in terms of the overall project site, the limits are really defined, pretty defined by what you see here. Again, looking at the zoning summary from what was originally approved, originally approved to where we are now. The difference really deals with open space. We were at 60, let's see, 63%. The current plan is now at 62%. Obviously, the gross living floor area has gone up from almost 15,000 to 19,500 with the additional units. And again, that's reflected in the gross living area. And then the parking requirements, we've provided some additional parking, which we can talk about as we get further on into this presentation. But again, really, the impetus for this amendment is to modify the existing garage buildings which are shown in this elevation. So these are the garages, the single-story garages that were shown in the north portion of the site. The proposal is to renovate them into, essentially with the same footprint into two-story, a two-story structure consistent with what's elsewhere on site for an additional four residential units. Garages, there will be four garage bays that are maintained as parking areas. So this unit here, this one on this side, and then these two on the right side are all still going to be maintained as garages. The central is being, the central garage is being reserved as a storage area for these units. And so, again, just looking at, I'm sorry. Looking at the floor plan for what's being proposed, where these garage footprints are. Again, there's a garage owner storage, a garage, two additional garages on the lower floor. What was previously shown as garages in the current plan are now occupied by stair units and entry, a bathroom, and office spaces on the ground floor. And then as you, nope, that may be the only floor plan I have. Yeah, so I'm sorry. So the remainder of the living units are on the second story. I can pull those up. They are in the application package, but this was just representative of what was on the lower elevation, the lower floor elevation. So again, these really are only occupying or modifying the footprints of these garage units in the back. There's a small area here that we're proposing for additional parking. We recognize that there is some permitting associated with the Conservation Commission that needs to be resolved that we certainly are in the process of going through. We have received a stormwater permit amendment approval. As of today, I believe, there are some additional comments from DPW related to utilities. Most of those, I'm happy to go through those, but I think most of those are relatively straightforward with respect to dimensions of parking stalls and some other ancillary information that we can certainly provide. I didn't see any of that being major, major issues to what's being proposed. So again, it's really limited to what you see here in yellow. It's this northern portion of the site where there's currently garages in this recycle building, which will be relocated to this location. Patio walks will be relocated. Everything will be, you know, pretty much proposed as is with the addition of a couple of additional units. So it's been a very successful project. And I think which is, which is the reason for proposing some additional units in a location where we already have current development. So trying to keep it short and open it up to board comments or questions.
Quick clarification, the application is for two, for five units, two duplexes and a single unit. I wasn't quite seeing that single unit. I saw the two duplexes with offices on the ground floor. Where's the single unit?
And maybe Doug or Shaw, you might be able to clarify where that additional unit is?
Yes, I can jump to that. Hi Doug, so I work with Jeff at Berkshire Design Group. The four units that are being proposed, three of them, as my answer, are three-bedroom units and one is a one-bedroom unit. So of the, there are four additional units that are proposed. There are five garage bays shown. Only four of them are associated with those units and one is associated with a, just a owner storage. And then additionally, the recycling building, the recycling shed currently that exists, that part of the garage bay is going to be relocated in an independent structure would be there in the northwest corner that Jeff had alluded to. That I think is on the next page, Jeff, if you don't mind turning to the next proposed plan.
Okay, I think George's question was where is that, where's that fifth unit?
Is it the recycling building?
The recycling building would be the fifth, I think. I think that's what you're referring, that's maybe what you're referring to. And so the independent structure that's off to the west side that Jeff is marking there with his mouse is a small, I think it's 165 square foot, three-sided, kind of Adaronic-style recycling shed.
Okay.
It's not a living unit, right?
Correct. It's not, it's not a habitable space.
Other questions from the planning board members?
I'm always good for a couple.
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, so one question. I wasn't around with the original special permit, so forgive me. It looks like that new recycling shed is in a, that wasn't a previous snow storage area, was it?
That's a good question. I'm not entirely certain whether that was or not. It's certainly something we could confirm, looking back at some of the old permit files. But I imagine we would be able to find sufficient snow storage elsewhere on the site if that small, you know, location was.
Okay, and could you show me the, you have like a combined grading utility plan?
Yes.
Want to zoom into those five parking spaces? I know DPW had some comments about trees on top of utilities and light pole comment, light pole conflicts.
Right.
So I assume you can work those out.
Yes, yeah, exactly. I did review those comments this afternoon and started to look at those and recognize that there was, yeah, some ability to move those around accordingly.
But I just, I was just curious about the drainage there.
Yeah. So I don't know whether you can see this plan now.
Yeah, could you just zoom in right on those five spaces? That's pretty good. So there's, there's, I can't really, so, oh, sorry. All the people's faces are blocking what I'm trying to look at here.
So, yeah.
So there's an existing stone diaphragm drain that kind of goes around the gutter line.
Right.
But you're cutting into that now with these parking spaces. So I'm just curious kind of what that is and what's going on with that drain line that's now under the asphalt and not?
Yep.
In the stone?
So that, so that drain line is my, my understanding is this stone diaphragm is a pretreatment element for the stormwater. And so it's an at-surface, you know, at grade elevation with a parking lot, drip strip with them catch basins in there to collect the, you know, the additional flow that may collect in that drip strip, which is what these are. You know, there's one here. There's a couple, a couple of those further down the site. So interrupting this drip strip doesn't affect the drainage necessarily at all. The drainage is all going to the same location. This is all below grade as with the remainder of the, you know, the drainage system effectively. So it shouldn't affect, you know, it shouldn't impact the parking at all. The drainage has been designed to be directed toward these gravel strips and these catch basin areas. So that the pretreatment and the flow of that water should be all, you know, all contained very much the same way it was originally. And Jeff, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Sure. I was just gonna say, so you might not be getting the pretreatment benefit for those new parking spaces though? Because it seems like it just goes right into the catch basin pretty quick.
And it, yeah, and I honestly don't know all the specifics of it. I do know that, you know, the Doug McDonald did issue, you know, approval of the permit, the stormwater permit. So, you know, I wish I had some more specifics to you and maybe Doug can answer, but I know that that was reviewed and examined in detail, so.
Okay, I'll put my faith in Doug. Thank you.
Sure.
I can't speak to Doug McDonald's comments in that particularly. I was only gonna add that the piping in that area is being changed to a solid pipe. Right now, it's a perforated pipe that's within the gravel area. So just in terms of the plumbing in that area, that's being slightly changed. As to the engineering, I'm on the landscape architecture side of the project here. So would defer that to Doug McDonald's comments.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Can you sew us the drive lane through the complex?
Yes. Oops. Sorry, my mouse is acting up tonight. So that's not the entire. So this, this is the current condition. So the central drive lane that is, that then gets divided by the central green area in the middle. So this circles around is two-way traffic, you know, through this entire loop.
So it won't, it's not conflicting with the new site of the recycling set?
No, so that, right. So the new recycling set shed is in this location. The parking, this patio area and walkway would get relocated more central to the green to make way for those parking spaces, right? And then the new units would occupy the same footprint as the current garages.
Thanks. I see on this plan here, the wetlands boundary 35 feet from that little brook is marked by very large stones. Yeah, all across and to the back of the garages.
Correct.
The existing buildings have large verandas or decked verandas, a large decks off the back. Are they going to be mimicked in the new construction?
So the proposal, so the, the lower floor needs egress by code. And so I'm trying to find the best plan to share that shows those visions. So on the back of the units, so on this elevation here, the lower floor is required to have an egress per fire code. So the proposal, if everybody can see, oops, sorry. Is on the back of those units where we need a walkway to the public sidewalk. They're proposing a cantilevered walk. And essentially, this needs to be a, you know, three and a half foot wide walk that extends off that first floor elevation around to the public sidewalk. And so without disturbing anything, you know, you can see the existing grade that falls away toward the wetlands off to the right of this, of this page here. But the idea is that we would have a cantilevered deck. And it really, it's a, it's a, it's an emergency egress access off the back of those units. So in terms of decks or other, there are some decks or balconies on the second floor. But on the first floor, all that's needed is that walkway to a public, you know, to an accessible walkway. So that cantilevered deck is being proposed in that lower level to avoid any impacts to additional wetlands. That answer your question, hopefully?
Yes, thank you. And Carolyn or perhaps the applicant knows when you will be going in front of the Conservation Commission with these plans?
I don't have a specific date yet. I know we've, we've been in, been in touch with the Conservation Commission to talk about, you know, potential agenda dates and, you know, the information required, but I don't know if we have a specific date yet.
I don't think it's been filed yet.
Right.
I did have a question about that, Jeff. Are those doors in the rear required for code?
I, my understanding is that they're required for code, yes.
I think that's going to be an issue with the Conservation Commission, but you'll have to work that out with them.
Sure. Yeah, my understanding is a code requirement for fire safety, but, which is, which is what prompted the cantilevered, you know, emergency access, but we can certainly work that out with conservation.
Because I think it'll lend itself to become a very attractive place to put out a little picnic table, even though there's slopage there and to kind of have the living space or the COVID outdoor space and roach into that conservation area.
Yeah, and I guess the only thing I would say, George, just to add to that, is that given where it is and the relatively narrow width of these, of this walkway, you know, it is really only three and a half feet, so it's relatively small. There's gonna need to be a guardrail on this outside edge because of the drop. So there's not going to be any direct access from these doors down to, you know, down to the wetland area. Just backing up, looking at these plans. Even go further and look at these. So, you know, these, these walkways will extend off the back of this to join up with these sidewalks. But there really won't be any direct access from those, from those access ways down to, down to the wetlands.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. In that, this is again, probably part of the drainage calculations, maybe Doug, in the, I believe it's the northeast corner of that plane that you're looking at. There's a lot of leftover, yep, right around there and a little bit towards, there's a lot of leftover construction barriers and wetland barriers. And there's a, what has become kind of a permanent runoff, little stream from this property into the brook. So you might want to take a look at that and maybe the cons comm will when you file that. You know, I think that we've heard from some of butters about some of the drainage problems they're experiencing in land next to the, next to the site. And some of that, some of this new little rivulet, this new little open drainage may be part of that situation.
Sure.
Other questions? Other questions? All right. Well then, hearing none from the board for the time being, let's open it up to public comment. Is there anyone out there in the audience who would like to speak in regards to this application?
I would. It's Joe Leahy from 83 Barrett Street.
Hi, Joe.
A couple of things I want to touch base on. The first one is the traffic. Right now, and I, I don't know of any other neighborhood in the city of North Hampton that has more than 500 rental units that empty out within 500 feet of each other. And based on the formula that was used by the applicant, that's 3,000 vehicle trips daily on, on a, on a street that's very short, number one. Number two, at the top of the street is elementary school and kids walk back and forth to school. Uh, we had a situation a couple of weeks ago where my wife talked to the police department about the speed on Barrett Street. And she remarked that the speed limit was fifth, uh, 25 miles an hour. And the police officer said to her man, nobody goes 25 miles an hour on Barrett Street. We've seen go as many as 55 to 60 miles an hour up Barrett Street. Um, this goes back to the city and their, their putting pressure on the neighborhood when they wanted to build that fire station. The mayor made a promise to the residents on Barrett Street that when there was not a fire emergency, no fire department apparatus would be on Barrett Street. Well, you know what? After that building was built, it took about 30 seconds for that rule to go out the window. We now have the fire trucks at speed down Barrett Street, 40, 45 miles an hour. And what's the gross vehicle weight of those vehicles? 26, 30,000 pounds? The kid runs in the street, how are they gonna stop? Take this a step further. I included in the photos that I prepared for all you people. There's a sign right up the street in front of this project. It refers to condominiums. That's how this guy sold it originally. He had no intention of building condominiums. He immediate, never put one up for sale, immediately started renting them. And when he did that, he can't sell them now. Cause no bank will provide a mortgage in a, in a condo project, quote unquote, a condo project that is rented out. They will not loan money. Um. I think the photos that I provided of my yard speak for themselves. Uh, and by the way, these photos are different years. Never did I think I was gonna need photos. But 2017, you see that, that John Deere in the yard? That thing weighs over 700 pounds. It can't be pulled out. It sinks. I've gotta get two or three guys over. We have to pick it up and carry it out of the mud. That mud has not stopped. It continues. Each one of those photos shows the amount of water that's in my yard. And amazingly, this property has been in the family for over 40 years. We never had this problem prior to that project being done. I learned many years ago when I was on the conservation commission in Springfield, when you pave something, the water's gotta go somewhere. Well, guess where it's gone? Our yard here. I would re, I would urge you, and I put my big career building moment to deny this. Enough is enough. You, uh, four, four units? Doesn't sound like much. We're, we're talking about a neighborhood that's got, that's got more than 500 rental units. So I'd be more than happy to answer anybody's questions.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else from the public? Hello, Sarah. I see your hand raised. Do tell us your address.
Meeting. Sorry. It took me a minute to unmute. Um, I, my name is Sarah Nolan. I live at 91 Barrett Street. So I'm in a butter as well. Um, uh, I, I have a, I have the concern about the traffic as well. Increased traffic. There is a lot of traffic. I agree. Especially, you know, with school, there's just constant traffic on this road. Um, but another concern I have, I know in the original special permit, there was, uh, restrictions on the lighting. Oh, oh, in the, so that it wouldn't be like leaching out of the complex. And I this, from the second story of my house, the lights from the garage, I don't have a problem with the other lights, but the lights from the garage seem very bright and they come right into our second floor windows. And I'm concerned that if there's a second floor on the garage, second story, I, I would want to have very, um, have the lighting not be so bright, have it better directed down and not towards, you know, other properties. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? So we probably in the first, um, application back in 2015, I would think had a lighting plan, maybe not Carolyn, that we could refer back to. Because, you know, for board members, anytime a developer opens up a site plan approval, a site plan application for an amendment, you know, it's within our jurisdiction to look back and to ensure that all of those conditions have been met or will be met, or if there have been changes that really have impacted the neighborhood, we can address those before they move forward with the, the new plan. So. Um, I, I don't think Sun would, um, proposed, uh, or provided a lighting plan for this new, uh, revisions. So perhaps we should ask them for that information.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I can just speak to it real quickly. Um, there isn't any plan to revise a site lighting per se. Um, there will be some new, you know, obviously building mounted lights as part of the, as part of the project. Um, and you can see those in the elevations here highlighted, um, in these locations, uh, on the, on the back of the building, um, here, and then, um, on the front, uh, facing the sort of this, the center of the site. These are all, um, uh, a wall mount fixtures, uh, wall packs. And I was hoping that I had, um, I do have a file of that particular, um, fixture. I may not have it right here with me.
I believe you're, you're supposed to give us a photometric plan as part of the application.
Sure. Yeah. And these are all building mounted lights. You know, they're full cutoff, um, dark side compliant. We can provide a, a plan certainly. Um, but these are, these are, these are minimal, mi- minimal, uh, minimal light additions to, to just provide, uh, lighting at the doorways. So, yeah, but we can certainly do that.
I, I just want to address the traffic issue, uh, as came up in our last hearing tonight. Um, I have a couple of kids at Jackson Street and I'm very aware of the intense traffic situation on, on, on Barrett Street and on Jackson Street. Um, and I, I, I think it's outside of the purview of the planning board to put in speed bumps and things like that. Um, I think it's something the city should be addressing and I think it's been especially bad over the past, uh, you know, during this COVID time when, with the rental school buses last year. So every parent was coming, uh, to drop their kids off and pick them up and stuff and, and, uh, it's, it's been a tough, uh, uh, situation and I sympathize with all the neighbors. So, but unfortunately I don't think there's something we're gonna fix in this, in this committee.
And may have missed it in the application, are these units intended to be rental units?
Uh, Shaw, maybe you can best answer that or Doug? I don't know. Um, I believe it's gonna be consistent with the remainder of the, of the units.
I'm not even sure we're allowed to consider that as part of the application.
Well, I think David, just as you referred to a previous, um, comment about, uh, uh, the previous application we had that there weren't enough rental units in the city. I was actually gonna say that this adds to our mix of housing in the city by having rentals rather than condominium. But I'm not sure where the developers going with these units.
Shaw, you seem to be muted.
Yeah.
Hmm. I, I can't, I can't answer that question. So we'd have to defer that to Shaw. We could get back to you on that. Sorry Shaw, I'm not sure why. You might be seemingly muted.
Well, in terms of the, uh, traffic too, you know, rental units, they, we can't say whether these people have two cars. I think they projected them down a trip that would happen and it's not gonna increase the serious traffic that they have on, um, Barrett Street at this point at LOS.
Right. We, we did, I mean, as part of the application, we did provide a, a traffic impact statement, um, which, which proposed, um, or estimated an additional three trips, um, average daily trips, um, with it, with this project.
Per unit.
Per unit. Right.
Other questions from the board who's getting a little tired out there in Zoom land, I'm sure.
Um, George, I could just, um, speak to the light. There was a, um, lighting plan approved. Um, uh, of course, under the previous, um, um, application, there could be certainly a review about whether the lights that were installed, um, meet those or maybe something happened and they had to be replaced with something that was brighter, but, um, uh, or potentially they're creating off-site glare and so shields might be required. Uh, so that's something that, um, certainly makes sense to, um, address because the photometric plan, um, showed that there shouldn't, there wouldn't be any off-site spillover.
So, but just, so, so where should, where should, I believe my name was Sarah, uh, who was, who was the, the neighbor? Where should she go to? If there's a, if she thinks that there's an issue that she should, who should she talk to?
Um, well, the building, um, commissioner is the code enforcement officer. So if there's a concern about lighting and maybe the lighting's not meeting the standards is approved, that would be the trigger for, um, a request for that review. Um, but also, um, you know, probably we would, I saw Shaw Perry raises hand, that, that's another place to go since these are rental units. So he is in, he's, you know, managing or having someone manage the site. So, um, that would also be another location, uh, avenue to pursue.
Great. Another, uh, item that came up that was marked on the original plans that we don't think has taken an effect is that, uh, there's supposed to be a number of plantings of our Bavita along the perimeter of the complex. And I think only about 50% of those were actually done and established. So we'd like the developer to take a look at those, the current plans that are in effect then note where those additional plantings can be done.
Right. Yep.
Um. In, in terms of Mr. Leahy and, uh, the drainage issues he's having on his lawn, which is downslope from this project. Um, I imagine that was part of the calculations that was done originally in the stormwater per, planning. It looks to me like some barriers were done as a mitigation effort to control some of that.
Right.
But I would hope that the developer could also look at that again to see if there's something they can do to help maintain that runoff flow. Um, and it may not be sheet flow. I don't quite understand all the hydraulics. It may be ground table water that's been affected. Um.
Sir, uh, Carolyn, as, as stated, it's the high water table and the amount of space that has been covered. The water's gotta go somewhere. So like I said before, guess where it's coming? And I, you know, unfortunately I'm not hearing the answers that are gonna correct my problem. And, and that problem is a direct result of you folks or your predecessors voting to approve this project. Now you've seen what it's done. And now you're gonna give him four more. Is he gonna come back for another 12 down the road? When he originally built this, he wanted 13 units. Now he wants 17. Wins it end?
I would hope that the new stormwater plan and the improvements that they've recommended with the DPW, it's gonna take a lot of the impact from these new units, whether it's gonna encompass the other units and their, um, flow off their roofs and that, uh, their driveways, I'm not sure. Jeff, I don't know if you have any, I know you're new to the project, Jeff or Doug?
Yeah, no, I, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to jump in and just, I'm trying to, yeah, avoid, um, so all of the stormwater, um, let me see, I, if I can just pull up the right, um, plan here. Um, all of the stormwater for this site is directed toward that internal island. So all the roof water, all the, the parking lot pavement, all of that, um, all of that runoff is directed toward, um, toward the center of the site. Um, if I can share real quickly just some of the pictures that Joe has shared. So this is, you know, this is obviously the previous pictures. The pool I think is located up here, but I think this picture indicates that, that, you know, most of this land slopes to, away from the, the development that we're talking about is to the right of this image. So most of this grade is, is, um, directed toward this, this fence line. Um, you know, most, most of what you see here is, is again, along that outer fence line, which is on the other side of, of the project. Um, we didn't, you know, all of, all of the stormwater for this site is directed toward this internal island. Um, that's where all the stormwater is. Um, the, again, the, the grade adjacent to this falls away in, in this direction to, to the east, um, to, to the wetlands and the resource areas in the back of the site. Um, so in terms of the stormwater that's collected for the project specifically, all that's, all that's directed internal and, and is managed, um, you know, in accordance with a, with a stormwater regulations for the city and the state.
Other issues, um, Carolyn, staff report that needs to be clarified. There's some DPW comments that I think Chris referred to before, that they need more details. Um, and I think the applicant has said those are mostly straightforward and they'll be able to do that.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, um, mostly cleaning up of the plan. Um, I think, um, the, you guys have already talked about, um, uh, the issues relative to, um, you know, planting and, and the timing of this might be, um, you, you all, up to you all to decide about when the plantings from the previous plan should be installed, if they're either, you know, happened before this project starts or concurrently or towards the end. Um, also just a revision of the plans to address, um, you know, um, details that were inaccurate on the plans and, and, um, to address DPW requirements for, um, sanitary cleanouts and, um, and then the la, the other piece is, um, about adjusting the location of the trees so they're not conflicts with utilities. And then, um, the other issue that came up, um, was the lighting from, um, just the public comment.
So is the board comfortable that those can be handled by conditions? Should we ask the applicant to continue the public hearing and come back with more information for us?
But it, it seems like there's a bunch of plantings that have to get done before. I mean, there's a bunch of things that didn't happen with the last development. I'm not sure why we would allow the first development to happen. I mean, the second vote, uh, until those things are, are met.
So, uh, can you just be, uh, aside from those, the tree plantings, are there other things? I'm not aware of other things that haven't been addressed, I guess.
Well, there's the tree plantings. It sounds like there's an issue with the lights, um, or at least one place. Or at least one place. And it just sounds like there's a little bit of runoff problems going on here.
I mean, I guess we've got a, we've got an approved stormwater permit. The lighting, I know, I mean, we can certainly address that. I, and Shaw could certainly comment, but I know there was a, there was a photometric plan that was submitted and approved that conformed to the standards. My understanding is that there were the, the bulbs and the, the lighting that was actually installed was a little bit less than what was originally called for. So the lighting that, that is there should be less than, you know, what was shown on the original plan. I can't speak to glare and some of those items from offsite because that's a little bit more challenging to, to measure. But we could certainly revisit that. I'm just, I guess I'm not aware of any, of, of any other major outstanding items aside from the plantings that we would need to revisit. So I just want to make sure that we've got a clear path ahead.
Sounds like you should be able to resolve very quickly then.
Did DPW also request any kind of revised snow storage plan in relation to these new parking spaces or? Am I confusing my applications?
I think there's for that. Sorry, let me just go pull it up.
I don't see one in their comment letter, but we can certainly provide a supplemental plan.
Yeah, I don't think that was part of the issue. And certainly I think that would have been flagged as part of the stormwater permit conditions.
Okay. You know, hopefully this, this has been a great planting season. I would hope that, I know probably all landscapers are pretty busy. And I don't know whether there's 35 or 50 Arbevitas in the region that you can buy now, but it would be great to get them in the ground. While you're specing those out on the southern border with the butter, there's a single family residence at the southern end. And there's a row of 18 Arbevita there, at least four or five of them are dead. It would be great if you could also replace those at this time. All right. So we have a, a list of items that will be addressed. Some recommended conditions from Carolyn. Planting of the trees before a building permit. The applicant needs to submit revised plans to the Office of Planning and Sustainability. Showing corrections to an accurate scale bar, sanitary cleanout detail. Location of bituminous versus granite curbing. And relocation of trees to ensure they are not planted underground, I mean, not planted over the underground electric. And certainly we are appreciative of. Are we putting money into the, the traffic mitigation fund?
Yes.
That could be prior to certificate of occupancy.
Any other items, planning board members that I missed? All right. If we have no more questions for the applicant or the public has no more questions. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Seconded by Melissa. Thank you, David and Melissa. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? All right. Okay. So then because it's soon, we'll go through a voice, voice vote. Sam? Yes. Dana?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And David?
Yep.
And Melissa?
Yep.
Hello Krista? Krista? Okay. Krista stays at this point. And the chair votes yes also. I think we have enough votes. So the motion to close the public hearing passes. All right. Any last comments or clarifications from board members on this application? Again, you know, it's, it's, it's one of the pieces of infill. It's close to a school system. It's close to public transportation. It's close to downtown shopping areas. It's walkable. It's ridable. It adds, you know, market rate rental units. There are impacts certainly to the streets, to the butters. But hopefully they are outweighed by the positive impacts of this development.
And this area does have huge amounts of water in the soil, in the ground. And I, I have a couple pieces of property over here and it's there's a, there's a lot of water there.
So Sam, I understand you correctly. You're just commenting that there's a lot of water in the butter's yard.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that that area has, you know, with the extreme amounts of rain that we've been getting. You know, the, the two pieces of property that I own right over there. Like I've had to install serious sun pumps in them because the, the water, I mean, there's like a class five river in the running, running under that whole area. So, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that, that this development hasn't caused a problem in, in the neighbor's yard. But I'm also saying that, that I, I know, because I'm not abutting this, this, this property, that there's a lot of water in, in the ground. And that's just my personal, my personal experience. And I mean, that's all, that's all it is. But I do think that it's worth noting that sometimes it's not, it's not the fault of of the development. It's just an unfortunate nature.
Thanks. All right. No other questions? Is there a motion on the application?
I have a question. Sorry, I'm just tired and I just want to make sure I, I know what the process is. So we don't need to do any conditioning around what happens at conservation commission because if they don't approve it, it's not going to happen anyway, correct? So that just, it's whatever their decision is. Yes, I'm seeing nods. Thank you.
Good question though. I always think that unconsciously if the planning board approves it before cons come. They may, they may influence some of their decisions. Well, planning board thinks it's okay, we think it's okay. But I guess on the flip side, if they went to the planning board first and resolved some of these things. We would also look favorably on the application. It would have been nice in this situation because it's so close to that intermittent screen and stream. And I think there is a real temptation for renters, for anyone to kind of move their laser activities outside of their house to the yard. And even though in the front of these apartments, there's a little communal space. All the other units have a private backyard space and these folks won't unless they create one guerrilla wise. But we'll leave that to the cons come. All right. Other questions? There are motions? Doug or Jeff, you want to make a motion?
I was very tempted.
Move to approve the project based with all the caveats that we look forward. Does anyone want to listen?
So a motion's been made to approve the project that four apartments above garages at 95 Barrett Street. North Hampton.
Yes.
With, with the conditions we discussed, including the revised plans, noting four items. And planting of required trees along the border ASAP. Money put in, in lieu of, put into the mitigation fund. And anything else?
Can I just ask for clarification about the, the timing for the tree planting? Do you want that to be before they start construction on the apartment units or? Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand what your intention is. Okay.
Is the applicant okay with that? The planting of the trees that should have been done in 2015 before you move forward on this project? So before you request the building permit. Thank you. Okay. So motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Melissa. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. We'll, we'll take a vote and I'll start up top with Sam Taylor.
Yes.
All right. And Dana?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And Krista?
Yes.
All right. And the chair also votes yes to move forward to approve this. So it's unanimous. Well, thank you very much for your amendment.
Yep. Good luck with it. Thank you everyone for your patience. Yes.
Yes. Thank you for your questions and your patience.
Yep. Have a good evening, everyone.
I think planning board, we have to hang in there for a few more moments. Our friendly staff person has a couple of items.
I have two ANRs, but with two cat, with a caveat for each one. I just realized that neither of the ANRs have been submitted electronically. One of them, they submitted the applications, but the surveyor, in one case, the surveyor doesn't do electronics. So we don't have an electronic file. And so we have to create that file. So I can show you on Google Earth, the lot that's being created. If that's not acceptable to you, I can certainly take an image of the paper copy that was submitted to our office. I just, I just frankly forgot that we didn't have the electronic file. I just assumed I could present it on Zoom and so I don't have an image of it. The other one, the surveyor sent the wrong file. The wrong electronic file at some lot in Belcher Town. So that's not really helpful for you. I can also show you where that one is. That one is really just a, a, it's not even creating a new lot. It's changing the boundary between two parcels. And so it's not going to actually create anything new. The first one is creating a new lot. So e, under either scenario, you know, we could put them off to the next meeting. Or if you wanted to just look at where they are and make a determination that way, you're fine with that.
I, I would prefer to see the plan that I'm endorsing personally.
Okay.
It's just me. I feel a little squeamish that we endorsed a plan that didn't exist in the previous hearing. But I went along with it, pure pressure.
I want to know about the surveyor who can stay in business without using CAD. That's impressive. You still ask for Mylar? You can't, you can't just get them to send you a PDF?
We, we do. We ask for PDF and CAD.
And paper copy.
Yeah. So I have paper.
The registry probably wants the Mylar, not the city.
Right. The Mylar goes to the registry.
You want to open up the whole discussion about archive files at the planning office and how we access them?
They seem to be working now.
So I think we've agreed to put off these two ANRs until our next meeting, Carolyn.
Okay.
You don't have a lot of extra work to do, but.
No, I, I mean, one of them, I assume I'll get the digital file any day now because I don't, they'll realize they sent me the Belcher Town one. But the other one, I'll just take a picture of it and put it up on the screen. Sorry about that. And then so actually I don't have anything else.
I don't, I think we approved all our minutes last meeting. So we're good to go. Thanks folks for hanging in there for another three hours. Serving your community. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by David. Okay. Sam, how do you vote? Adjourn. Okay. Dana?
Yes.
And Krista?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hey Melissa?
Yes.
George, and it's unanimous again. Thanks Carolyn. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good one. Bye.